All right, welcome, everybody. It is 7:07 PM. Thanks for joining. Sure, I... All right, please stand and repeat the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rory, will you call? Roll?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Gettle?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Sperry?
Here.
And Clever?
Here.
Thank you. All right, we'll hear from Chief Larson for the Unified Fire Report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be with you. First off, I really appreciate Chief Lee Ascardy covering for me last month. I'm sure he did a good job, and hopefully he had better jokes than I do. No?
Nope.
Yeah, I'll have to work on that.
Close.
So what you see in front of you is the quarterly report for 2023, the first one. And I apologize, I just got this this afternoon, hadn't had a chance to get that out to Matt for distribution to each of you, so I'll be sure and get that right to him so that you can have this to look at and keep for your records. But it's similar to what you've... You're familiar with this, that you've seen other quarters. Up in the top left, it lists the total incidents, emergent calls, and the percent of emergent calls. The four-year monthly comparison is always, I think, a good one to look at. You can see that for 2023, 383 calls in January was a bit above what we had the previous years. And a little bit increased over last year, 2022 to now, in each of the categories, actually, or each of the months, excuse me. And the call type, back in the middle left, mobile car fires, six, was a little high for that quarter. Structure fires at five. And then we have the top EMS dispatches. Shortfalls always seem to be at the top of the list, and that falls in line with what we're trying to initiate. It's in the very beginning stages with the county working on some fall prevention programs for the elderly. Other top dispatches is listed on the far right in the middle. And then the incoming units, these are responses into Midvale for the top engine and truck responses. You can see 125, 126, of course, your stations are at the top, always there, of course, and quite a bit. And then Cottonwood Heights and Taylorsville, you can see that their mutual aid response into Midvale. Then the top ambulance responses, ambulance 126, 757 total ambulance responses. And then the emergent and total time. Now, these are the dispatch times from time of the call till time of arrival, or time that the station receives a call till time of arrival. And 50 times out of 100 were there in 4 minutes and 31 seconds or less. And then the 90th percentile is 7 minutes and 9 seconds. Essentially, what that means is that 50 of the 100 calls were there in 4 minutes, 31 seconds. Forty of the 90 were there in 7 minutes and 9 seconds or less, if that makes sense. And I looked at the last quarter of 2022, and there was like a 1-second difference in the 50th and 7-second difference in the 90th percentile, so we're staying pretty consistent. And again, those times really help us with the chief's goal of shortening our turnout time. So it helps us track that and take a look and see how we're doing. Any questions?
Well, that structure fire staff, is that basically anything that has like a foundation and a frame?
Yes.
A shed to a six-story building?
Yes, could be an outbuilding, office building, yes. Residential.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Okay. Just very quickly, a few things I would like to go over. I know we've got a busy night, and I'll try to be pretty quick. Last Saturday, we held a funeral for Captain Matt Hamilton. Many of you may have heard, he passed away last month. He joined the department in 1996, and he worked on multiple deployments with Utah Task Force One. Matt received awards for recognition for his service, including deployments to the World Trade Center after 9/11, two-unit citations for his Hurricane Harvey deployment in 2018, and Canyon Vehicle rollover in 2021. He'd been a heavy rescue captain with UFA for the past 15 years, and he was a founding member of the UFA Heavy Rescue Program. He was part of the rescue team for countless numbers of people. His influence stretched beyond UFA, and he will be sorely missed. Our continued thoughts and prayers go out to Captain Hamilton, Hamilton's wife, and his two children. I just kind of wanted to mention that. He had a huge impact on our department. Recruit camp, they're in hazmat week right now. They're studying for hazmat awareness and operations. The recruits are doing 48-hour full-scale exercises, well, they did that last week. And they were able to respond to different emergency scenarios during the 48-hour shift. Those scenarios were akin to what they'll be facing out in the real world once they get out into the stations. We just finished a battalion chief process, so vacancies that we have can be filled. Of course, flooding is on everybody's mind, and we're working closely with Salt Lake County Emergency Management. We understand there's still, in many places up in the mountains, 70 inches of snow still. And so, of course, our crews are well-prepared for swift water rescue. Both our swift water rescue teams and the fire crews themselves have all received training, so I think the Jordan River here of concern, they're well-prepared to take care of anything that could happen. And that really kind of jumps right into our safety message. The runoff is well underway, and the rivers are running high and fast, and measured temperatures in the mid-30s. The Jordan River last measurement was less than 50. Individuals can get hypothermia very quickly if they fall in and get swept away. So we're asking the public to take extreme caution when recreating near any river or stream. Particularly, pay close attention to your children and pets. With fast-moving water, the riverbanks are eroding more and can give away even when you think you're far enough back. If someone or a pet falls in, do not jump in after them. Throw them something to help them stay afloat, and importantly, call for help. The best thing anyone can do right now is just stay away until summer. So that's our safety message. One quick note, too, we just had four captain promotions, and I wanted to let you know that your firefighter paramedic, Ben Edgeworth, over here at Station 125, was promoted to captain. So happy to see him progress. That's all I have, Mayor. Any questions that I could try and answer?
I don't know if you have it off the top of your head. I know they moved the fire school date. I think it's coming up.
The 19th.
May 19.
Councilmember Sperry and I were just talking about that.
Great.
The 19th.
I hope that... I've asked them to directly communicate with both of you. I don't know if that's happened or not, so.
Yeah, they got us the invitation. We have the RCP by Friday. I'm just looking at that. It's my... I think I mentioned to you, it's my nephew's wedding, I think. So I was just comparing the time to your... I mean, I'll be able to...
Well, if you can be there, I'll be back from my conference, so I'll be sure and be there, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right. Next up, we have a Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation, which I'll read now. Whereas, May of 1949, Mental Health America established the first nationally-recognized month devoted to increasing awareness of the importance of mental health and wellness in Americans' lives, and to celebrate recovery from mental illness. And whereas, mental health is essential for a person's overall health and people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and communities. And whereas, according to Healthy Salt Lake, 17% of Midvale residents have reported experiencing poor mental health 14 or more days in the past month, and 26% of Midvale adult residents have been diagnosed with depression in their lifetime. And whereas, the rate of depression across the country has more than tripled compared to rates in 2019. And whereas, emergency department visits for attempted suicide among girls increased significantly during the COVID pandemic. And whereas, American Indians, Alaska natives, Black youth, and LGBTQI+ youth face disproportionate risk of suicide. And whereas, only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas, the theme of Mental Health Awareness Month 2023 is, quote, "Look around, look within," end quote, according to Mental Health America. And whereas, Mental Health America's goal is to emphasize the ways that our surroundings, like safe and stable housing, healthy home lives, neighborhoods, and cities, and nature, affect our mental health. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Marcus Stevenson, and the City Council of Midvale City hereby proclaim and recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month, adopted on the second day of May 2023. All right, moving on to public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this point by stepping to the microphone and giving their name for the record. Do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none. Move on to reports. For mine, just a reminder that Food Truck Fridays does start this Friday. We've got the first one here at City Hall. Really excited about that, and it will go until, I believe it's August is when it wraps up. So every Friday here at City Hall. The other... Just a quick update on Unified Police. Nothing major has happened since the last time we met, but we do meet tomorrow morning. This is our first reorganizing meeting will be tomorrow morning, and so at that, we are going to confirm Chief Mazeron's new position as the administrator of reorganizing. Officially change our meeting dates to update that schedule. And then Mazeron has been working on some different issues related to how do we start gathering the right information to be able to restructure? So I actually met with him today to go over what some of that looks like. I'm excited about everything coming ahead, and as we hit some of these major points, I'll make sure that you are updated. And we will be meeting with our precinct officers next week to give them an update. I believe we're doing that twice. I asked Shelley to send you all an invite in case there were folks who wanted to make it. So you should have received that. We just won't hit quorum in that, so space is limited if you'd like to join us. I believe it's Tuesday and Wednesday night next week. For that, I'll go into council reports. Councilmember Sperry?
Yeah, real quick, Mayor, I guess for part of your report, would you like to comment on the Teacher of the Year awards or anything?
We... I would invite you to do so. We are going to invite them to come to our next council meeting.
Okay.
But please do.
We have invited them. We have invited them. I mean, I just, you know, really great last week was the Canyon School District Teacher of the Year awards, and the top elementary, top middle school, and top high school teachers for the district were all from Midvale area schools. So with the district teacher of the year coming from Midvale Middle, so, you know, fantastic that we had that. Yeah, look forward, if they're coming, hopefully if they're all going to make it to our next meeting, that we can, you know, present them with whatever we're doing. But it was just, you know, really great to be there. You know, the mayor was, you know, at one point in there, I said, "I feel a little bad, yet all these teachers come, and we're monopolizing it," and he said, "I don't feel bad at all. I'm proud of our city." So, you know, so that's true. But at the end, I was proud because I said, "The three teachers were from the three schools I attended as a child, the elementary, middle school, and high school," so I had that pride as well. But that was great.
And so far, I don't think we've been accused of bribing them either. That's what I was expecting the whole time, just, yeah, we're...
That's just because everybody knows it happened. They don't have to accuse us. They just know it happened. I mean, we were told the last council meeting, we're all evil, so it's okay. But that's it, that, no, just fantastic, you know, that they, you know, that we got that representation, and great job for the teachers in our, in our school district and in the schools here in the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
I don't have much, just a short story that I found out this week that I shared with the mayor earlier. There was discussion online about how many cities in the United States are named Midvale, and there's like seven or nine. And our city is the largest city in the United States named Midvale, at least according to Wikipedia. So that's something we can take pride in, that we are the largest Midvale in the world. So that's all I have.
Those other ones don't even have an elementary, middle school, or high school.
Yeah, and we won three awards, yeah, so, yeah.
That's right.
I thought it was a fun piece of information.
And I'm pretty sure Twitter is binding, and on Twitter, I said, "We would change our motto to..."
The largest Midvale.
The largest Midvale in the country, yes.
That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Robinson?
I have no fun facts for tonight, so I'll just leave.
Okay, please come with one next time. Councilmember Glover?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Gettle?
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to mention quickly, well, first I wanted to congratulate the three teachers, including a friend of mine, the Teacher of the Year, Maxwell Eddington. Very proud of him and all of them for winning their respective awards, but he was actually the Teacher of the Year. So that's gonna be great. Hopefully they can all make it to our next council meeting. I was also, I've been mauling the thought for a few weeks now. You may know that Utah has adopted a new state flag that goes into effect in March of twenty twenty-four. So we have about ten months to kind of phase out the legacy flag and introduce the new flag here at City Hall. But I was also thinking, we technically don't have a flag for Midvale. We have a seal that we put on a structure that we fly as a flag. I was thinking that we could, as some other cities have done, Salt Lake City and I believe Sandy City currently is engaging in a program to redo their municipal flag. And I thought that that could be a great activity for us to do, whether it's to keep the one that we have. I'm not a huge fan of that. I mean, that looks great as a seal, but maybe not so much. It's a little busy for a municipal flag. Something that we could have the community engage in or something we could, you know, if we want to hire a professional to do it for, you know, some hopefully not exorbitant amount of money. Personally, I think most other cities, Salt Lake City and Sandy have started with their residents. And I think that we have enough talented artists here in Midvale that that could be a great place to start. And definitely give the city some sort of activity that, you know, is fun, hopefully, and not as divisive as it can be sometimes. But I do know the, the state flag anyway, that had some divisiveness issues. Those who wanted to overturn the decision of the legislature apparently fell very, 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 very short of the number of signatures they need. So I think it's something that's happening statewide and in enough municipalities that we should give it some thought and, and come, you know, rally around a new municipal flag for Midvale and right underneath it, we can put the largest Midvale in the world. What a great segue. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. But that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Same, Andrew Dahl?
Yeah. The one thing I want to cover tonight is there were some email exchanges in the last twenty-four hours regarding statewide program that landscape conversion incentive program. And it was noted that there are many communities in the state as well as in the valley that offer a program that provides a larger amount per square foot to remove, replace turf than what is available to us through these similar programs. Right now, Jordan, sorry, the state program would allow people in certain categories, which I'll come back to in a second, to receive two to three dollars per square foot to replace front, backyard, park strip, grass. Program would only allow residents here roughly about fifty cents to seventy-five cents per square foot. Now, the reason that we don't have access to that program is that in order to get that larger dollar amount, the community has to adopt the water conservation programs from their essentially the water provider. In our case, that'd be Jordan Valley Water Conservation. We had talked about this a little bit more around the time that we were looking at our water rates entering into that program. In order for us to participate in that program, there would be quite a bit of limitations or prohibitions on new construction and what can be done with turf in those cases. But we, I guess part of the reason I bring it up is one, to explain why we have not adopted those policies of Jordan Valley and so Jordan Valley Water. And so therefore, we're not able to access the larger dollar amounts. But at the same time, I just, I guess I'm bringing it up to say, is this something that you would like us to look at again? Bring back something more detail on those Jordan Valley Water policies to see if you guys would like to explore adopting those? Or, I mean, like I said, I think it was about two years ago was the last time we kind of talked about it. But if you would like to look at it again, that's something that we could do.
I would. I'd like to see what the differences are.
Same. I would agree. We can look at it.
Glenn, that's you. That's you.
Let's see how his glasses are.
Okay, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that and ask about that, and that is all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do have two public hearings tonight. Now, at the last meeting, it's a similar situation where both of these public hearings have to do with the same property. However, we do have an action item on each. What I would just wanted to quickly propose is that I would read through both items. We'd open one public hearing for them and then close that and then do each action item separately. Are you comfortable with that?
Do we have to have separate public comments for each item on the agenda? Are we, are we able to combine them through a procedural standpoint? I don't know of any myself.
I'm not aware of any reason why we couldn't. If we're making it clear that we're doing the public hearing for both items and they're related to one project. I think honestly, it'd probably be more confusing for most people if they're trying to distinguish what their public comment, which one of these actions their public comment applies to.
Well, Garrett, if you're comfortable with that, then I am as well.
Great. Didn't we, didn't we do that last week?
Yeah, we just, this is different because we didn't have action items and this time we do. So we've closed public comment and then do the action items separately though. All right, with that, I'll read through both of these and then we'll open, go into the staff portion. So item A, consider rezoning property located at six ten West Seventh Ave from single family residential two zone to multifamily residential medium density zone. The northern portion of the lot will remain in the clean industrial zone. Ezra Newtall is the applicant. And then item B, consider a final subdivision request for a property located at six ten West Seventh Ave to split into two lots. Elizabeth?
Okay, so this property is located just kind of northwest of where we are now, just over off Seventh Ave and sits on the corner of Rio Grande right there. And it's kind of an unusual larger lot and the lot is actually split by the zoning currently. So the northern, sorry, the northern half, yeah, is remaining clean industrial. And then the lower portion, they're proposing to change to RM twelve. Everything that kind of sits parallel with it and below in that area is still in the SF two zone. But they do, across the street on Rio Grande, just east of it, they do have two lots that are zoned RM twelve as well. So that is what they're proposing. I'm sure you're familiar with the rezon criteria. Staff found that they could meet goals one and three about, you know, a community need that wasn't anticipated and maybe the surrounding environment has changed enough that we could encourage some redevelopment in the area. Additionally, the, this area is in the main street slash old town opportunity area in the general plan and does support rehabilitation and improvement of some of these residential areas. So staff is supportive and we have provided the same motion that was included in your report. We did not receive any public comment ahead of this meeting. We did receive some for the planning commission meeting. Most concerns were about access to the property during construction and that was solved by them taking Eighth and around and coming through the industrial zone. And the residents were okay with that. And then there was kind of some misconception about how much density would be on the property and they can only have a duplex with the size of the lot. So it will just be that and after they heard that, no one really had any concerns, so. That's everything for this one. Oh, sorry, I will do the next one. So they are also proposing a final subdivision to just split the lot where the zoning changes. So the one lot will be in the clean industrial and the other one will be for the RM twelve zone and that's their final plan.
Any clarifying questions for Liz, Elizabeth?
Okay.
All right, with that, I'd ask for a motion to open the public comment.
Mayor, I motion that we open the public comment.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, public comment is open. Do we have any public comment? Say none? Is there a motion to close the public comment?
Mayor, I move that we close the public comment.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, public comment is closed. Any further discussion from the council before we move on to the action items?
Just wanted to clarify, you said that there were, there were some concerns and I understand those. But as far as you know, those concerns from the neighbors have been assuaged. Okay. That's good.
Elizabeth responded, yes.
For the record.
That's good. I mean, I, I thought that there would be maybe just a little bit more pushback based on, you know, the neighborhood is one of our historic districts here in Midvale. And sometimes when we have any sort of plans that, you know, mess with that neighborhood, you know, we have some more public comment about that. So like, you know, I guess we're only as good as those who show up and, and tell us that they don't like it and there's no one here to do so. So we can assume that most of the neighborhood is in favor of this.
On, on that note, have we heard any complaints or anything about this, the, the structure that's going to have across the street? Those condos or anything since it's been, I know there's a few, or have people?
She's coming up.
I find it interesting because it, it looks so different and it was such a big change, but I think it could be a good thing. So I'm just curious if the neighborhood has come around to it. I know it's not done yet, so.
I will say that the people that came to the public comment for the planning commission were concerned that it was gonna look like that. And I think most of the comment we got at that meeting, and granted, there was only a handful of people, but they were not thrilled about it, I would say.
Did the across the street thing?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'm excited about it, but I, I just, I thought I would hear more and I haven't heard.
The only one I've heard about was when it was still wet outside and there was mud.
Yeah, well, yeah, it hasn't been most controlled, I don't think, you know, but.
My only concern is, and this is gonna be, you know, for me as the council member who represents this area, is to just have some more conversations. I'm worried that folks back here, knowing what's happening everywhere else, maybe feel like it doesn't matter if they come to council meeting or not, that the, the building, the construction is gonna happen, which, you know, it's not entirely untrue in a lot of areas. You know, we, we have some ability to deny a rezon request, but, you know, once it's zoned a certain way and we have a developer who wants to develop it that way, then that's where our ability to say no gets a little trickier. So I will do my best to try to make sure that that's not the prevailing sentiment among the residents of the avenues, of our Midvale avenues, that is.
All right, well, with that, I'm gonna move on to our first action item. Consider ordinance number twenty twenty-three zero oh zero six, rezoning property located at six ten West Seventh Ave from single family residential SF two zone to multifamily residential medium density RM twelve zone.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh zero six, rezoning property located at six ten West Seventh Avenue from single family residential two SF two zone to multifamily residential medium density RM twelve zone.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion on that? Rory, we co-roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Moving on to the second action item, consider approving a final subdivision for property located at six ten West Seventh Avenue to be split into two lots. Entertained motion, unless there's more discussion.
Oh, we're doing the action item, right? Correct, okay, well.
Mayor, I, I move that we approve a final subdivision for property located at six ten West Seventh Avenue to be split into two lots.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that?
Is there a resolution or ordinance number associated with that?
Not on this one.
Okay.
I was looking forward to it and just went for it.
It works.
It works. Thank you, Councilmember. Rory, we co-roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
And Sperry?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda for the night, just one item, consider minutes of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Rory, we co-roll?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye.
And Glover?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That passes. All right, and now we only have like a thousand item, action items for the night. Moving on to item A, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three R sixteen, authorizing the adoption of a term sheet between Midvale City and the redevelopment agency of Midvale City for the design, installation and maintenance of a mural and approval of the mural artist recommendation. Okay?
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Bringing back before you the request to enter into an agreement with the redevelopment agency for the design and installation of a mural mural on the old fire station. And on top of that, also the approval of the artist's recommendation. Just for anybody listening online that didn't watch last week, the mural selection committee is recommending the artist Creo Bravo, who's a Salt Lake City resident and she likes to highlight her Mexican heritage and a lot of her art. And the key terms that we want to briefly address that are listed in the agreement that was included in your packet include the terms for maintenance of the mural, which the agency will be fully responsible for. And the artist's obligation, that being that we would go to the artist to see if they wanted to repair the mural if the agency deems that they can't repair it first. And that it would provide the agency the right to reproduce the mural in all of our documents, websites and promotional materials. And with that, I have a motion, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just for the record again, can you state what the cost is going to be for this?
Yes. I believe it's thirty-two hundred dollars is what we are paying the artist and that's the stipend that includes, we're requiring that the artist get their own insurance and then they pay for the equipment that's needed, including paint supplies. So the stipend will go towards that as well.
I'm excited about this one. I think the visibility will be a lot more than any of the other ones, right? It's right on hold and it's too bad we didn't do that Greek mythology one there. Just kidding, that's a bad joke. But I think it'll be great. It's a little bit of an ugly building, so it'll look, you know, it'll look good and it's in a good spot.
Yeah, we're excited about it. Has the UPD group moved into that building yet with the gang services prevention?
I, I'm not sure. I don't.
They have?
Looks like they have, yep.
Not that that should interfere, but give them something to look at.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. That I entertain motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash sixteen, authorizing the adoption of an agreement between Midvale City and the redevelopment agency of Midvale City for the design, installation and maintenance of a mural and approval and approve the mural artist's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Rory, you co-roll?
Yes, Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
And Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three R seventeen, adopting the Midvale City fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Mariah?
Okay. Here's just a look at the timeline moving forward. We had our budget treaty on the thirtieth. You'll adopt the tentative budget today. Hopefully, you kind of have to. And then we'll have a public hearing June sixth on the budget and then on June twentieth, we'll present the final budget for adoption or move into truth and taxation at that point. A few reminders on what exactly the tentative budget is. Um, a few reminders on what exactly the tentative budget is, this is estimated revenues and expenditures for July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, a tentative budget is presented for each fund and all departments in this, in the city fall within a fund. Um, it has been prepared by the finance department and the city manager, um, and really reflects an effort to maintain the city's current, um, level of service, um, in these uncertain economic times. Um, and then this tentative budget is the first draft of the budget, which I was quickly reminded of when I like sent this off and was promptly asked for more things, um, so it is, it is a first draft of the budget. Um, so in the general fund, um, our total revenues and expenditures is just over twenty-five million dollars. Uh, this is actually a one percent decrease from our amended fiscal year twenty-three budget. Um, we have project, projected new ongoing funds of one point one million dollars, and our proposed use of fund balance, uh, is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, which is a significant dis, decrease from last year's use of fund balance. Um, so, uh, to talk through our revenues, any of the numbers that are in red are the same, projected to be the same as last year or have a decrease from last year, as I was going through, um, and doing these revenue projections, I was just trying to be as conservative as I can, so that was either looking back on our, uh, previous year actuals and year-to-date up to this point. Um, and then making a minute adjustments from there to just really be as conservative as we can. Um, so taxes are at sixteen point eight million, licenses and permits, uh, eight hundred and thirty thousand. Our intergovernmental revenues have increased, that's the most, uh, significant increase, as we did have a, a five hundred thousand dollar increase in, uh, shelter mitigation funding, although we did just find out about that last week when I was finalizing this, so that shifted some things around. Um, our charges for services, two point three seven million, fines and forfeiture, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, our miscellaneous revenues increased, that's our interest, luckily, that's one thing we've got going for us this year, is we'll have, uh, more interest revenue, and then our use of fund balance. Um, so just to break down the tax revenues a little more, um, we are projecting our tax reg, revenues, our sales tax revenue to have no change from fiscal year twenty-three. Um, we're, we're really on a steady decline in, in the increase we have been seeing in sales tax, and, um, just from my perspective, this feels like the safest and most conservative thing, is even though we might have one percent or something like that, the, the best thing we can do really here is have no change in our sales tax. Um, we're projecting one point five percent new growth in our property taxes, we had two point four last year, so again, staying on the conservative side, which will give us, uh, forty-three thousand, and then this tentative budget does include, uh, eight point six percent property tax increase. That brings in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of new revenue, um, and it's, we don't get the average household value until kind of the end of May is when the assessor finishes that, so going on last year's average household, it would be about nineteen dollars a year. Um, that was higher, thankfully, because we got, uh, that new, uh, homeless funding, uh, money stuff, and last year, we really shrunk that down uh, as much as we could, uh, with the current state of the tentative budget. Um, franchise tax staying steady at two point two million, and all the rest of the taxes staying the same as last year, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So that's all the general fund, uh, revenues. Um, I just wanted to remind you guys as we go talk through the expenditures here, that all the departments participated in an exercise where we looked at the last five years of actuals, averaged those out, and really, they went through and made a lot of cuts to their budget wherever there was any fluff. And so, uh, even though there's like very few, um, requests for expenditures, I want you to think about the always, every single department cut as well, wherever they could. So, um, our pub, so, and then these are all of the, the ongoing expenditure, um, requests in the general fund. So, public safety, um, is increasing seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, that includes UPD, UFA, and our animal control contract. Um, the proposed increase for salaries, which is a five percent COLA, one percent merit, and then a few market and midpoint adjustments is two hundred and ninety-one thousand. Uh, our benefits increased four percent, so that was a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Um, our fleet replacement costs are two hundred and nineteen, uh, there's a request for a, a full-time facilities technician, and that's sixty-three thousand in the general fund, our software costs increased thirty-two thousand, we have some requests for splash pad and playground maintenance for twenty-five thousand, and then all the other little adjustments in the departments that were increases, but they were less than six thousand dollars, I wasn't gonna list all those out, totaled to sixty-eight thousand dollars in the general fund, and then we have the community survey for twenty-three thousand. Um, and then the only other requests were one time, which is that three hundred and fifty-nine in, uh, use of fund balance, we have our grants for the Boys and Girls Club Arts Council, CBC, and the Hillcrest Sports, um, outside legal counsel for fifty thousand, our harvest days, election costs, I mentioned in the workshop, that those, this does not include the new numbers for the geo bond, um, some tree maintenance, and soft fill for playgrounds. Uh, so from, from here, we're gonna go, I'm gonna kind of focus in on some of the different departments, um, and what those budgets look like specifically this year. So for the total budget for general government, which includes all those departments there, is three point five million dollars, this totals fourteen percent of the general fund, and has increased seven percent from last year. Um, the notable requests in, in these departments are, uh, the salary and benefit increases, you'll see those across the board. Um, there's an FTE moving from the Community Development Administration Department into administration, um, so that money is shifted into here, the community survey, and the election costs. Um, and public safety makes up forty-nine point two percent of the general fund, uh, has a six percent increase from last year. This is a six point three increase, six point three percent increase from, uh, the fif, fiscal year twenty-three UPD contract budget. It gets kind of confusing when we're looking, because their overall budget increased in different ways, but we look at so many different numbers with them, like, what did we actually budget versus, like, what was in our budget, doesn't include what we had, use of fund balance from them, so what was in our budget last year to what is in this tentative budget is a six point three percent increase, and then there was a thirty thousand dollar increase in our animal control contract as well.
Mariah, can I just talk about that for one second?
Yeah.
Animal control budget, because we did just, um, go over that at our last meeting, and, um, just so you guys are aware, um, the animal control contract, they take a dollar amount, I believe it was nine dollars and forty cents or so, and they multiply that by, um, every municipality's, um, official population as given to them by the Kenzie Gardner Foundation, and that's how they come up with that number, so it's a nice, easy process, um, that other agencies might adopt in the future.
Yes, and they're also very prompt to give me the numbers when I ask for them. Um, in administrative services, uh, about two point seven million dollar budget, totals to ten point nine percent of the general fund, this is up one point five percent, um, from last year, this is just the software increases and the salary and benefit increases. Um, public works makes up twelve point two percent of the general fund, is about three million dollars, this is up, uh, six percent from last year. The notable requests are the salary and benefit increase, the full-time facilities technician, and then the tree splash pad and ma, playground maintenance that they've requested. Um, including the, community development is one point six million, uh, with, which is six point four percent of the general fund, this has decreased thirteen, thirteen percent, that's mainly to the, uh, FTE moving into administration, um, and then they also have their salary and benefit increases for their staff. Um, there's also, there was not a, a budget increase because we had budgeted a, a building official last year, um, that's shifting into, we're kind of joining that with another position, um, that's paid for out of the water fund, for, to be a plans reviewer for part of their job, and so that didn't actually increase the budget, but it is kind of a shift in what is being budgeted for in community development under building inspections. Um, in the debt service fund, we have a total budget of one point eight million dollars, the revenues into this are transfers in from the general fund to meet our debt service, um, and then, uh, loan payments that come in from the RDA and a loan, uh, from, uh, for developer, from a developer, and then we're just paying our bonds and lease to the NPA and those things from here. Um, in the capital project funds, we have a two point one million dollar budget, uh, from use of fund balance, we have facility maintenance, a general plan update, and the recreation seed money, um, our, our sales tax that we use on pavement management and, uh, sidewalk curb and gutter replacements. Um, we have the five hundred thousand dollars from HB two forty-four that goes to transportation projects, and then we're getting a grant for, uh, Jordan Canal Bridge project. Um, in the water fund, we have total revenues of just over twelve million dollars, this is a decrease of fourteen percent from last year. Um, the water fund is under the comprehensive financial sustainability plan, so a lot of what is budgeted is built into that. Um, we had budgeted to bond in fiscal year twenty-three, that has been moved into twenty-four, as it's a, a timeline issue, you bond when your, uh, shovels are going into the ground, and we haven't been quite there yet, the decrease, uh, is mainly due to that we've received all the ARPA funds, that was all budgeted for last year, so it's in this year's budget. Uh, expenditures are just under twelve mi, million, which is a decrease of three percent. Uh, notable requests are the wholesale water contract increase, though we've gotten updated, again, uh, draft, we have new numbers that will, will be higher than that. Um, we'll have a total of six million dollars going to water master plan and other capital projects, and then a hundred and six thousand dollars for bond issuance costs. Uh, in the sewer fund, just over five million, this is down two percent from last year, similar to the water fund, the budgeting is part of the comprehensive financial sustainability plan, um, and bonding has been moved from fiscal year to twenty-three into fiscal year twenty-four. Um, total expenditures are just over four million, which is a five point two percent increase. Um, this includes salary and benefit increases, uh, South Valley, uh, Water Reclamation Facility operating in capital increases, uh, our hundred and ninety-one thousand, and we'll have bond issuance, issuance costs in the sewer fund as well of thirty thousand. Um, the stormwater fund is two point two million, uh, increase of two point nine percent, uh, the stormwater master plan and rate study is currently underway. Um, the notable requests in this fund are salary and benefit increases, and then we are also requesting a use of fund balance of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, I'm recommending this because that's kind of the difference in this fund, but there's no reason to like make any decisions on changing rates or whatever to address that while the rate study is underway. And it has sufficient, uh, I think it has over a million dollars in fund balance. Um, the street lighting fund, uh, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand is a decrease of ten percent, the only notable requests in this, uh, department are the salary and benefit increases, the, the department cuts came through all of the enterprise funds as well, so when there's a decrease, it's because we went through and took away any fluff that there was in the operating budgets. Um, and the sanitation fund, one point five, uh, million dollars, this is an increase of seven point seven percent, we are recommending a ten point five percent increase in sanitation rates, um, to make up for the seven point one percent increase in the ACE contract this year and the three point five percent last year that we, um, uh, used, we used fund balance to cover. Um, our tipping fees also increased thirty-six thousand dollars, and there is a little bit of salary and benefit increases as well. Um, the telecommunications fund, uh, is nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, this has increased two percent, really, the only expenditure in here is our Utopia pledge payment, so that's the only notable request. Um, in the fleet fund, we're down seventeen percent, this is, uh, because we're purchasing less vehicles, we're having a hard time purchasing any vehicles right now, actually, has a total budget of one point five million, um, part of the fleet facilities, the new fleet and facilities technician would be played, paid out of the fleet fund, um, and then the other portion of their expenditures is, is vehicle and equipment replacement for six hundred and eighty thousand. And the information technology fund, the total budget is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, this is a decreative, decrease of fifty-two thousand, they, uh, purchased some, uh, switches or some big, uh, technology software that I should know exactly what it was, but I.
It was a, it was a flux capacitor.
Yeah, exactly, uh-huh, uh-huh. Don't tell Matt here, so I didn't know exactly what it was. Um, uh, they have some salary and benefit increases, and then they do, their hardware is on a replacement, so that's computers, and then their other switches and things. There's some switches and, I, I know it in the back of my head, I promise. There's something else, servers, switches and, switches and servers, there we go, okay. Any questions or comments?
In the fleet fund, are we trying to buy a DeLorean?
No.
Is that why it's hard to buy?
No, like, Levi would tell you, like, he literally cannot get a truck to save his life, so.
Well, I just thought if we bought that flux capacitor.
We would need both, right?
If we were to go back in time, we would need both of those components.
Um, and then if you're going to make a motion, the one in your packet, we need to also establish, uh, the public hearing, uh, at this meeting, and so we just need to add that into your motion, and that wasn't in the packet.
So this one would be fine?
Yes.
Questions, comments for Mariah, otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash seventeen, adopting the Midvale City tentative operating and capital budgets for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and set the public hearing for the budget for June sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Rory, we call roll?
Yes, councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Sperry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Moving on to item C, consider ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh zero-seven, amending Article Two of the Midvale Municipal Code, Chapter two point one six, and enacting campaign contribution limits. Garrett.
Good evening, mayor and council. So after our discussion in the last city council meeting, um, we went back and changed the ordinance to remove, uh, the requirement, uh, for the, the prohibition for people to be able to accept or to give, uh, contributions who were asking the, uh, city council to take a discretionary action. So currently, the new ordinance before you is pretty much the same, minus that part, it would establish, um, maximum contribution limits for each election cycle, for five thousand dollars per person for a mayoral candidate, and one thousand dollars for a council candidate, um, and then keep those penalties the same.
Questions, comments for Garrett?
Um, I want to thank you, Garrett, and, and the rest of the team for, um, you know, probably hours worth of research, and hopefully, some of it was at least interesting, uh, looking at other cities and jurisdictions and lawsuits that have happened and succeeded or failed. Um, just personally, you know, this is something I've, um, been wishing for, for the last four years, was when I mentioned it, uh, the first time, so, um, while I wish that it had, uh, maybe an extra component that it's lacking, um, I do recognize that the votes, uh, didn't seem to be there to pass that, um, so that's something we can look at in the future, if, if future council is ever interested in that, but I think, um, this does a great job of addressing some of, uh, you know, some of the basic issues of campaign finance and, and how in the state of Utah, we're kind of in the wild, wild west when it comes to reporting campaign contributions, and just hoping that candidates are honest and trustworthy people, so, um, barring that, you know, putting campaign limits as far as the dollar amount of contributions is kind of the, the best we can do for now, and I think it'll be a, a great, uh, addition to our next election cycle.
Uh, councilmember Gettle, would you like to make a motion?
I sure would, thank you, mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh zero-seven, which amends Article Two of Midvale Municipal Code, Chapter two point sixteen, and enacts campaign contribution limits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Rory, we call roll?
Yes, councilmember Gettle.
Yes.
Sperry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Moving on to item D, consider ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh zero-eight, rezoning property adjacent to the Mills Project, located approximately two oh eight and two twenty-eight, east eight thousand south from single-family residential one agricultural overlay zone to multifamily residential medium-density zone. Elizabeth.
Okay. Um, this is coming back to you from the last meeting, uh, this is the rezon for the property that sits just east of the Mills. Like we said, everything else is remaining, they are just rezoning this to match the RM-twelve zoning of the rest of the project. Um, and the motion has remained the same.
Can we talk about pickleball?
I, I have one question for the applicant related to this.
Okay.
You can come up. Can that, can you, they'll make you come up. So, so it looks like around the church on the sandy side, they're, they're digging, is that this property too? Is that this development too?
No, well, the, we do on the property just east of, uh, the church, it was a Hillcrest Care Facility, and we rezoned that last year, and we demoed the existing building, so.
And are they putting just homes up there, or?
Yeah.
Will it match the project, I guess?
Pretty close, yeah, twenty single-family homes, very similar lot size, maybe even a little bit smaller.
Same style and everything?
Yeah.
I just thought it was interesting, because I was like, I drove by after the whole pickleball thing to see what it would be like over there.
Yeah.
Um, so is the golden, whenever the church turns over, that'll match as well, because it would look like a cool neighborhood, but it would, might be goofy if there's like this split.
The, the church is kind of having some, I don't really know what they're doing, I mean, they at one time wanted to sell.
Right.
They were trying to find a new location, they couldn't find one, and they canceled any agreements they had to sell at the property, and so they say they're still looking, but I'm not really sure what's going on, and in the meantime, they've made some improvements to their building, have you noticed?
Yeah.
It looks nice.
Right, that's why I was, I was confused when I saw that in the building and like.
Yeah.
Okay, so, no plans or anything?
I don't really know, I mean, I, I don't ever talk directly with the church, I work through their representatives, um, they, I just hear from them generally what they're thinking of doing.
I just thought it was nice that, that it was bigger than I thought, you know, adding, I don't know how many homes I added in the scene.
Twenty.
Twenty, so, cool. Is it part of the Mills Project? Is it part of the Mills project, or is it its own separate?
We, we're calling it something different, just because it's in a different city. But it'll feel very similar, very similar.
That's what it looked like when I.
Yeah.
You know, similar development.
Our plan is not to even start on that project till we're done with everything in the mills, so, so it'll be a couple of years, probably two years before we start that.
Well, though, I guess my, what I'm getting at, if there was a pickleball court or something, would those people be able to use it as well? The Sandy, or are you separating them totally?
I don't even know what a pickleball court is anymore, Councilmember Brown.
We just want to keep Sandy out of it. I mean, I guess the thing is, if they're two different developments, they could do, whether it's through the developer or later, they can do a cross-use and easement agreement, you know, to use it and charge a fee. It, it happens.
We have no intentions of them being the same in any sort of shared amenities.
Cool, thanks, I know that was random, I just didn't know that was even happening, so.
It was kind of a surprise, well, that building was kind of low-profile, but hidden behind the fence, not a lot of people even knew it was there, but it, it was vacated last May, June, and it's been vacant, we've been trying to work and get it, get it down, so there wasn't a bigger incident.
Sweet, thank you.
Yeah.
Questions or comments for Jacob or Elizabeth? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the rezone for property adjacent to the Mills project located at approximately two oh eight and two twenty-eight east eight thousand south from S F one A O to R M twelve, consistent with the findings included in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Rory, recall roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sperry?
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Moving on to item E, consider amending a large-scale master plan for the Mills project located approximately two oh eight to two seventy-two east eight thousand south and eighty fifty-two to eighty eighty-two south, three hundred east. Elizabeth?
Okay, yep, so this is just to amend the large scale to include the portion that was just rezoned. Um, this is their new concept plan that they have submitted instead of the pickleball court, so that has been taken out of their plans. We put a clause in their development agreement as well that says that they will not construct a pickleball court in phase three. So that's been included in their development agreement, and you'll see that in just a minute. And the motion is the same.
I'm just gonna say, I think it's a little unfortunate, because everyone not in the community got what they wanted. And everyone in the community was probably like, man, this would be really nice if we had a pickleball court, but since they don't own a home yet, they don't know they want that, so it's a very interesting thing, uh, that, that would happen, you know, but you know, I don't, I don't think it's very fair, you know, for outs, you know, for them to, to do that, but.
I'll echo Councilmember Brown's statement, I think, um, you know, the, the developer in this instance should be commended because, um, as far as I know, there's, there's no legal recourse for, um, someone to tell them that they can't put a pickleball court where they want to put a pickleball court in a community that they are developing and land that they own. So, um, I would thank the developer for taking into consideration what the neighbors said and, and taking their objection to the pickleball court seriously, although, as Councilmember Brown says, I think it's unfortunate for those who are going to live there who may very well have desired a pickleball court in their new home.
It's just a small piece of grass now, right, like, it's not as usable, so they'll get what they want, because people won't be using it.
And I still think you should call it Pickle Drive, just to memorialize forever what could have been.
What could have been.
What could have been.
Yeah, if you please, come to my panel.
You can, you have last word, no one else is here.
So, um, the common space is like we talked last time, I did the pickleball because I thought it'd be kind of fun, and people, I knew it would be used, so people like, because people like playing it, so I tried to find something that was kind of unique and fun. If you notice this, there's kind of a, the whole property is surrounded by planters. We're pretty conscious of where we put grass, and we focus in putting it in areas where it can be used and utilized. So, unless it's a detention base, and usually, we won't put grass, you know, wall-to-wall grass. In this case, we have, it's a little bit of a unique subdivision, because the, the streets are kind of narrow. Um, they're private roads, and kids need places to play on hard surfaces. You know, in my neighborhood, there's kids that ride scooters and bikes all over the place, and they're right on the road. And so I thought, this would be a kind of fun place to put in a, like, a little track that's off the road, where kids may have fun riding their scooters around it, and.
Oh, that's a, that's a track?
Yeah.
Well, that's cool. That's cool.
Yeah.
And I like how it, it's got the different curves, you know?
Yeah.
So.
We try to make it meandering, so it'd be interesting and fun for the kids to race around it, I have stripes going down, there's, there's, you can't see the benches, but there's a couple benches around it. So, I think that'll be fun for kids, it's a nice safety feature for parents, if they knew they were riding their bikes and scooters around that versus in the road. And then there's some nice green space in the middle that people, kids can kick a ball, and people can take their pets and stuff like that.
What's the approximate distance of the meandering circle?
Oh, length?
Yeah.
I think there was three lots here, and they're about fifty feet, so a hundred and fifty, three hundred, probably three hundred to four hundred linear feet is my guess.
It'd be a nice park.
Yeah.
Actually.
Yeah.
And not only that, it's, it's not just the park, it's the greenery in there.
Yeah.
Between the houses and stuff that'll make it.
Yeah.
Quite nice, I think.
Yeah.
I like the extra parking there, too.
Yeah. Well, I remember last time a council member was concerned about parking, and I told him that we're also concerned about parking. We, we've, we have met the deadline, the minimum, but we've exceeded it. We didn't need to put any of this extra parking in it to meet the requirement, but we added it, because we know it's important, so.
I think it just supports your, your project.
Yeah.
Every project I've seen in the last five years, there's not enough parking.
Yeah. Yeah.
There was, uh, like, an event at, uh, some sort of kind of temple or something on Saturday across the street from this.
Oh, yeah.
Did the parking, I mean, when that happens, sometimes there's like fifty or sixty cars. Did it bleed into this development? No one complained, I guess, is my question, I know.
There's only two people living there, so I don't know.
Not yet, then, we'll, we'll wait a couple months and see.
If they did complain, I didn't hear about it, but I probably wouldn't hear about it if there was concerns. Anyway, so I wanted to give you some context, just looking at the image, just looks like grass and trees and stuff, and generally it is, but there's a fun use that I think would be utilized there, and it'd be kind of cool, so.
The circuit's cool.
Yeah. Anyway, that's all, unless you have any questions.
Well, just thank you for working with.
Yeah.
With the citizens.
Yeah, not a problem.
I agree, I, I said it last time, I think it's a little bit of an odd place for us as a city to be operating, but I think you guys have done a, a great job at, at working with that neighborhood, and already in my fairly short amount of time in this seat, I've seen a number of developers come in promising to work with the neighborhood, and it's always hard to tell how much that is actually going to be happening. And I think in this case, it's clear that, that you stepped up and did that, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Sometimes you can do it, and they have reasonable requests, other times you can't, but I think this was a good compromise, so it should be fun for both of us, and we're happy with what we've got, so we're good. Thanks, Council, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the amended large-scale master plan for the Mills project located approximately uh, two oh eight to two seventy-two east, uh, Eightieth South and eighty fifty-two to eighty eighty-two south, three hundred east, consistent with the findings included in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Rory, recall roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
And Sperry?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Moving on to item F, consider approval of a preliminary subdivision for phase two and three of the Mills projects located at approximately two oh eight to two seventy-two east eight thousand south and eighty fifty-two to eighty eighty-two south, three hundred east.
This should be familiar to you at this point, this is just the subdivision for the lots. Um, this will be for their plat for phase two and for phase three. Again, just preliminary, you'll see it again for final, but, and the motions remain the same.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision for phase two and three of the Mills projects located at approximately two oh eight to two seventy-two east eight thousand south and eighty fifty-two to eighty eighty-two south, three hundred east.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Rory, recall roll?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Sperry?
Aye.
And Glover?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Moving on to item G, consider resolution number twenty-two-three R eighteen, an amendment to the development agreement for the Mills project.
No, no slides for me on this one, just, uh, to note that we took out the pickle, we added a clause that says no pickleball court will be constructed in phase three. And other than that, um, everything should be fairly straightforward for the amendment to just include the new phase three portion.
Do we have a motion?
I just want to ask a question about that, um, just for future reference. I think some of us up here are uncomfortable, well, one, ever talking about pickleball again. But, two, just, um, you know, there seems to be some gray area here. Um, I, I don't want to ever have that conversation again to say, we don't want you to put a pickleball court somewhere, or, or anything. You know, we don't say that to any other developer, um, as far as I know, as far as an amenity in their own community goes. So, um, you know, other than the, the residents of this area, plus the developer agreeing that they're going to not put a pickleball court here, um, do we have any authority as a council to say, um, developer, you will not put a pickleball court here?
So I think there was, um, yes and no. So if, if Mr. Ballstead had brought his project and did not require a rezone request, and just requested to develop it under the existing zone, there's nothing anyone could do here to prevent him from installing a pickleball court. In this particular case, because of the proposed development and the amendments to the large-scale master plan, uh, to the, um, development agreement and the rezone that would be required to develop the property as he was requesting, you have the ability, because that's a discretionary, it's a legislative action made by the, the city council, to say, we would approve this on the condition that you don't do the pickleball court. Um, but again, if he had just submitted an application under the existing zoning, you're correct, that there would be no discretion to require that.
My opinion would be, um, that we'd be very careful with that in the future, because, um, I don't, I, I think in this case, there was no reason to ever make the rezone request contingent upon not having a pickleball court. Now, there are some times where there are, you know, we do make those contingent upon at a master development plan, but something as, in my opinion, trivial as where you can put a pickleball court would not be a reason to not rezone it. So, you're, we were kind of, you know, when we combined those two issues last week, um, I think that we created confusion among the residents who all came here to talk about a pickleball court, which had nothing to do with the rezone request. Um, and I know that we've done this in the past, and I've raised these concerns in the past, too. And I think, again, we just need to be very careful moving forward when we hinge these rezone requests on something that is farther down the line as far as the development agreement goes. You know, we kind of held that rezone request hostage based on, um, neighbors who didn't want a pickleball court in a certain location, and that has nothing to do with the rezone request.
What, what worries me about it is, um, the way our current state legislator operates is if, if the developer was one of those legislators, we would not, we would have a new law that would come through telling us we would not be allowed to do that, right? And that would, that would have been really terrible, right? And so I think we need to be very judicial with using the rezone master development plan requirements from the city for things that matter, right? Um, you know, whether it's like parking and density, so for something that I think is a lot minor, a, and if that ever comes to be, I think that's, that's where I am trying to, that's where I was cautious last time. You know, for instance, I know since I've been on council, we've pulled back on like, you know, we can't tell, uh, you know, the state doesn't want us telling people what their signing can be, right, anymore, right? Where before, you could be like, only red signing, right, in this whole neighborhood, where that's a lot more, that's a lot more challenging. So like how, uh, you know, you know, a story and a half, what does that mean versus, you know, uh, you know, just your height's twenty-eight feet or whatever, right? So the state has been telling us less and less, it has been pulling back our, our ability to do that, and I really hate to trigger us losing that ability for something that matters, for something that doesn't. So I, I, I would not want to do this again for something like a pickleball court.
Yeah, we've done it in the past, like you said, for serious parking issues, serious emergency vehicle entry and, and exit issues, but we've never done it for something like, uh, an amenity that would benefit any community that it's in. Um, so, again, I would be very cautious of that in the future.
Yeah, and I think the thing just, Garrett covered it already, but I mean, it's just to clarify is that, that was part of a public hearing, and that the residents could, whether we say we're not going to address this kind of thing or whatever, they can come and speak to whatever they would like on that, and, and in that oper, in that instance, you would be able to say, we're not going to make decisions on this, but, uh, you are within your right in legislative actions to do that if you wanted to. So, I just want to say, we're not going to be able to prevent that from being an issue that is brought up if there's some, if they want red fish in their koi pond instead of goldfish or whatever, like, we can't stop them from coming up and, and making that their issue.
Yeah, for sure. They're trying to make their issue, this is why we don't want you to rezone it. And so, whether you take that into consideration or not, when you vote, that you, we have that right to do that, so.
At, at the moment.
Yeah.
If, every, every session, we lose more and more of our ability, so.
I would say, however, and not to give a roadmap to people in the future, um, who might not have greater intentions, um, if we would have denied the rezone request based on the placement of a pickleball court, we would have put ourselves in great legal jeopardy, in my opinion. Um, so, again, that's, I would recommend not doing that in the future. I mean, certainly, you know, I'm, all four people, I would have people lined out the door, speaking at a council meeting if they wanted to. However, it should have very little bearing on a rezone request.
And I think we made that clear, right, that we were not making that decision. I don't necessarily feel like we made it, the pickleball court, like, held that hostage to, for the approval at all. I mean, Mr. Ballstead may, may disagree, but I think he, he even made some comments, and I, correct me if I misstate it, but they were willing to change it, you know, that he, he would have changed it anyway if he could have, but it had already been submitted, so I, I mean, I think the difference there is, you've got a, a, the applicant developer who's, who's stating, hey, we're willing to change this, right? So I don't think it was us necessarily saying, hey, you, you have to.
Yeah.
They're offering, and it's to appease the, the residents, okay, let's put it in the development agreement. The developer's already saying, yeah, we'll change it to, to address this, so. I, I, I do agree, though, that it's, it's a separate issue, and so we don't want to conflate those things going forward, but, but I don't, I don't feel in that instance that it was like held hostage or anything.
I.
Is there any way to make it so he could have submitted it, right? Because he kept saying, like, it would have saved a lot of issues and whatever to begin with, if, if he was like, actually, here's just, you know, I've taken it out. Right, like, I've, we've dealt with it on our own, which is what I think Councilman Gettle's saying, like, if the citizens and developer, you know, work through it on their own or whatever, but instead, we had to do that whole thing, that, and so everyone got, got up and sort of voiced opinions, it took, you know. That's what was passed tonight. Yeah, no, I know that's tonight, but if, you know, if that could have been presented, you know, or does it have, did it have to have the pickleball court in it when he came in last week, last time?
I think it was just a timing issue, right?
I would just say, we're not in the habit of changing application materials, like what the planning commission has seen versus what you see.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if that's, maybe that's just been a procedural thing on my end, but, you know, then the planning commission doesn't get to comment on the new plans?
The planning commission had given a, my understanding, unanimous rec, uh, recommendation for approval
Yes.
The pickleball court, and so that's what was brought to you, was what the planning commission had recommended.
So, in that week or two weeks, no changes can happen?
No.
No.
Well, that's why this change did happen, right? This, there, in the last council meeting.
Yeah.
Those comments were.
So I get why this one, I'm talking about previously, so, planning and zoning pass it, he can't make any changes to that between that and city council?
Depending on the extent of the changes, maybe.
Maybe. I just mean, because we can always tell, we can always change it about now when we're here, so I don't know why that would matter, but.
My last question, um, Councilmember Sperry, I agree with what. My last question, um, Councilmember Sperry, I agree with what you said up to a point and that's because now we have a development agreement to consider, which has a specific clause in it that says the developer cannot put a pickleball court on this location in phase three. And I don't know the legality of having a development agreement that says that. I mean, it's great that we all had like a gentleman's handshake and said, no pickleball court here, but I don't know how legally binding that would be in a court of law if the, the developer was not as gracious as, uh, they have been throughout this process. So I, I fully plan to vote against this development agreement just for, for that unless we can strike that clause. Cause honestly, and Garrett, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if someone were to challenge in court a clause that tells a developer that they can't put a pickleball court, which I don't think is anything that we can prohibit. You know, there's not, it's not pornography, it's not a tobacco shop or, or any of those things that allow us to deny something. Um, I don't see that how we can have that clause in the, in the development agreement. But for the, you know, just the developer doesn't seem to have a objection to it. But if they did, they'd have a, a pretty good course of action, in my opinion.
Are you looking for a response or is that more rhetorical?
Um, well, I mean, uh, as far as I'm concerned, like, I can't vote yes on something that has no real legal basis to it. You know, I'm sure that you've, um, you, Garrett and your staff have, have looked into that. I guess my question is whether that clause prohibiting a pickleball court in the development agreement is something that, um, you know, we can feel confident is, um, you know, a legal clause to have in a development agreement.
Our, our opinion is that it would be legally enforceable and would not expose the city to any additional, any sort of liability.
Still a tough one for me. It's, you know, what's the next time someone comes in and, and they say they wanna put a dog park, which a lot of people who live in a community would, would love to have that amenity. And I would argue that having a dog park is much louder than having a pickleball court, which will be used for a couple hours, maybe a day, a couple of days a week. So I, I don't know, I'm not comfortable with it myself.
You have any comments? I'm just wondering if the applicant wants to say anything or not, doesn't have to.
This is an interesting conversation, I'm enjoying it.
We can continue if you'd like.
I just want you to name every road after something related to pickleball.
I think you should call it Pickle Park, Pickle Drive, everything.
Picklers.
The, our, yeah. I will make a motion, Mayor. Um, I will move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three R eighteen, authorizing Mayor Stevenson to sign an amended development agreement for the Mills project. However, in my motion, I would like to, uh, strike the clause that prohibits the pickleball court in phase three.
Is that the only amendment to this?
No.
Okay, sorry. We're good then. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor with that amendment.
I, I generally like the idea of what he's doing, but he's got a plan to not put it in. So even if we, even if we pulled it out, you're not putting a pickleball court in, right? Okay, second, let's go through this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All right, Rory, will you go roll?
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Sperry.
Nay.
Um, Glover.
Nay.
Robinson.
Nay.
Okay, that motion fails.
Mayor, I move that we, uh, let's, let me get here in just a second. I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three R eighteen, authorizing Mayor Stevenson to sign an amended development agreement for the Mills project as presented.
Second. Second vote. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
I mean, I'll, I'll just say, I mean, I, I see where Councilmember Gettle's going. And I don't, I don't necessarily like the precedent that we're setting. I think the difference here is we, we do have a developer who was, who was being open minded, was willing to agree to that. Which may not always be the situation going forward, right? And that is where we would have to say, we're making the decision on this rezone request separate from this other issue. So I, I mean, that's where I, again, I see where you're coming from, I just see that it's a different, it's a different issue that we'd address at that point.
I think setting this precedent makes it difficult for us in the future to say no to something that a developer might, um, not be so agree, agreeing with. Um, so, you know, we are a legislative body and I tried my best to prevent that and we'll see what happens now.
Did we have a second?
We did, yes. Okay, Rory, will you go roll?
Yes, Councilmember Gettle.
No.
Sperry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Okay, uh, we don't have any closed session tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second, all favorably say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
Aye.
All right, and we will get into our redevelopment agency. Okay, we good to jump right in then? Didn't see.
Yes.
All right. So Councilmember Robinson will be excused for this meeting and our next meeting, just so we all know. Welcome, everybody. It is eight thirty-two PM, I'll call this meeting to order. Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Board Member Gettle.
Here.
Sperry.
I'm here.
Brown.
Yes.
And Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson is excused.
Thank you.
Board Member Robinson.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public comments, any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the redevelopment agency of Midvale City Board at this time by stepping to the microphone and giving their name for the record. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, just one item, consider minutes of April eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor, move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion on that? Rory, you can roll.
Yes, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
And Sperry.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Moving on to our first action item of the night, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three zero five, RDA adopting redevelopment agency of Midvale City fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Cody.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, board members, appreciate it, appreciate your time. Excited to go over the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, uh, the tentative budget. I do this every time, but we really do, um, consider our, our vision, our mission and our values as we're putting together the budget. Um, we try and internalize really what it is that we're doing here and connecting that to number, not just, you know, numbers, but really initiatives that we're doing to, uh, realize our, our mission, vision and values. And so our vision is to enhance Midvale City's unique culture, identity and community spirit. Our mission is to improve Midvale City through strengthening housing, shaping economic growth and implementing Midvale City's general plan. And our values are to be transparent, engaged, integrity, community collaboration, commitment to city goals of housing, beautification, historical preservation and commitment to responsible growth. So those are the, uh, mission, vision, values that we really try and, um, have bleed through into this, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Um, so just a, a quick overview of all of the different funds, um, we have five of them. Uh, the operations, then the three project areas and then the citywide housing. Going into operations, there's really no significant deviations from the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. We get these numbers mostly from, um, from Mariah and, uh, from Christian, from finance and, um, basically just support the costs that it, that it takes to, uh, provide the RDA services. The Bingham Junction project area, um, probably the biggest, uh, ticket item is the one point four million for public improvements and that is the, um, the main street, uh, north end, the, the improvements that we have going on on the north end of city hall and then in between city hall and the, um, senior center. And then, um, also a transfer over to Main Street, which will need a little bit more, uh, funding before it starts collecting, uh, funds next year. The, um, those are the details on that, so, but I kind of covered the, the main points, I feel like. And then we're meeting our obligations for the tax increment reimbursement agreements and bonding, affordable housing. Going forward, we're transferring twenty-five percent of what we collect rather than twenty, just because in previous years, uh, we were not so diligent in spending those funds. And so rather than having a really large expenditures in the last few years, we're just gradually increasing it from twenty-five to twenty percent. Uh, the Jordan Bluffs project area, we are expecting a pretty significant increase in tax increment revenue uh, as the Zion's technology headquarters, the full value hits, the tax rolls. It's only about eighty million is on the tax rolls right now. Um, this next tax year, I think it'll be about a hundred and sixty million. And so it's about a forty-three percent increase in the total, um, incremental value of the project area. And, um, and so that is just basically gonna increase, um, how much we're getting. Um, I worked with Zion's and getting these estimates and these numbers together, so that's not reflected in this yet, but I will make sure it gets updated before, um, we have the public hearing and adopt the, the final budget. And in the Main Street project area, um, we just triggered it this year. The way it works is you trigger it and then the next year they start collecting it and then the, the following year they distribute it. And so tax year twenty twenty-four is when we'll get our distribution, um, of those funds. And we have five hundred thousand towards a revolving loan program and a hundred fifteen thousand towards public art in that budget. And then finally, the citywide housing, um, we have increased the, uh, budget for the home repair loan program as we got a hundred thousand dollar grant that was actually just, uh, determined yesterday that it would be awarded. And so we've increased that from a hundred and sixty to two hundred and sixty thousand for the home repair loan program. And then, um, two point six million in affordable housing incentives and two hundred eighty-five thousand for, um, housing programs like the, um, down payment assistant program, um, that we adopted and will be, um, actually putting out an RFP. The RFP has actually just gone out for a third party to help us with some of these housing programs. So if there's any questions about the tentative budget, happy to address those.
Can you get back to the slide real quick? Um, I was just looking at the Applewood community lease revenue, is that, um, when is that done?
Um, that is a good question. So they, I think it's a soft loan, so if they don't actually have the revenues, then they don't have to make the payments to us. So it could be a long time, um, I think in about, um, if they were to make the full payments, it would be about twenty years.
Okay, that's good, I just wondered, I, I didn't want to do anything that was, um, making it financially difficult for them to.
Yeah.
Continue, so.
Yeah, their payments to us are contingent on them having the funds and they, they send us a, a fiscal report showing that this is how much we have available and then this is the percentage that you get of that.
Cool, okay, cool.
So it's not onerous on them.
All right, any other questions or comments for Cody? Ah, I didn't entertain a motion then.
Mayor, move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three zero five, RDA, adopting the tentative budget for the redevelopment agency of Midvale City for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and set the public hearing for the budget for June sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM or immediately following the city council meeting.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that? Rory, you can roll.
Yes. Uh, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
And Sperry.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Moving on to item B, consider resolution twenty twenty-three zero six, RDA, authorizing the execution of the TRCC grant agreement between the redevelopment agency of Midvale City and Salt Lake County regarding the Main Street Festival Lighting Project. Okay.
Thank you, yes, so I am bringing before a board, the board, whoops, um, a request to enter an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County um, for a, for grant funds to help fund the Main Street Festival Lighting Project. Um, so just some background, uh, the Salt Lake County Tourism, Recreation, Culture and Convention Support Group Program, which is the TRCC grant, um, provides funding, funding to eligible entities who are looking to support cultural and economic growth in their community. Um, the RDA, uh, submitted a grant application, uh, for a total of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand and seven hundred dollars. Whoa. Um, and back in July and we recently found out that we were approved for, um, the, the grant and that we would be awarded, uh, two hundred thousand dollars to put towards that project. Um, with that, the RDA will contribute the remaining one eighty-seven and seven hundred dollars to match the, the grant funds and that will cover the, the remaining cost of the project. And then those funds were also included in the tentative budget that you guys just adopted, um, or passed. And that, uh, again, this project will help fulfill the important goal of placemaking along Main Street by providing a quality, safe and one of a kind experience for the people who visit our street. And then in order to receive the funds, we do have to enter into the grant agreement. Um, some key terms include the grant amount, our contribution. Um, the period for performance, um, ends March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, so the project has to be complete and the funds have to be expended by then. And this, the funds will help pay for the final design of the festival lighting as well as the installation and construction, um, along the street. And then the method of disbursement will be a lump sum reimbursement. And I guess, um, I am asking for the board to suspend the rules, uh, due to the need to start the project as soon as possible just so that we can ensure that we complete, um, the project and expend the funds before that deadline.
Do we have a timeline goal on our, I'm glad to hear that we have to do it within a year anyway, but do we have a goal?
I would hope by the end of this year, it just kind of depends on the RFB process.
Any other questions or comments for Kate?
Yeah, one question, um, I might just be dumb, I don't know. Um, is festival lighting a type of lighting that remains year round? Or is it lighting specifically for events and festivals?
It would be year round festival lighting, yeah.
So if we go out, you know, tonight, a year from now, there's gonna be.
Yes.
Lighting.
Yeah.
Across Main Street from one side to the other.
Correct, yep.
It's festive lighting.
Yeah.
That's a good question, cause I thought it was only like specific holidays.
Oh, that's great, but also it'd be nice to have.
I've heard it called a lot of things, there, yeah, string lighting, festival lighting.
I thought it was just for like the mural festival or something.
Okay, so I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, no, sorry, yeah, so this would be year round, um, permanently installed along the entire length of Main Street.
And then who is responsible for, you know, a string of them go out or are damaged?
Yes.
Only Glenn, nobody else.
Glenn.
Glenn specifically. Cherry picker.
This thing, does this include doing some with the mur, murals that light them too?
Um, not this specific project, um, we are, uh, looking at doing a, a separate lighting RFB, which would include the streetlights and then lighting up the murals. And we would work in conjunction with the property owners to do that.
I, I'd really like to push on that, you know, especially the one that'll be on this building.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is if, if they're, you're putting it out for design, I mean, why wouldn't you have a design that other into it?
Yeah, and we.
It wouldn't cost that much more to put the design together and then you've got it instead of. It wouldn't cost that much more to put the design together and then you've got it instead of two different designs.
Yeah, we can look at doing the R F B for the entire thing. Um, the agreement, though, would be just for the
Right.
the festival lighting, yeah. Um, and then I guess to your question about or the desire to light up the um mural on City Hall, we've already talked to Blue Line, who's doing the plaza. And they have included um lighting to uplight that mural, so that will be done separate than all of this.
And approximately, how far will the festival lighting go from center to City Hall or just?
Yeah, so center, all the way down to City Hall, and then the plaza will also have festival lighting, so it will essentially extend the entire length of the street, so.
I can't wait to see this.
Yeah, that sounds nice. Um, any uh thoughts of just the the houses that face Main Street? Um, could be a little bit of light pollution for some of those uh houses on the corner of the avenues in Maine.
Yeah, so included in the quote when we went out, um, getting like initial numbers for this, um, it was, I can't remember the name of the lights, but essentially it'll be the ones that you can change the colors and we can talk to them about the brightness. Um, but it will definitely address that when we get to that design phase.
And they would be on um from like dusk to dawn or what triggers that? Because we have severe swings in when it gets dark and light in the state of Utah.
No, what what we'll do with these is there'll be a certain time that they're on typically when the the business hours are and then they'll go off. We'll have streetlights that, so we'll have what we're planning on doing is taking the same sort of design of streetlights that we have on the very southern part and extending that up the streets. So we'll still have the streetlights that stay on all night. And then the festival lightings will be, will come on at dusk and then basically turn off when the businesses are closing. If we're having an event or something, they might stay on longer.
So they're not going to be on all night?
No, they they won't be on. And they won't. These will have the ability to be different colors and stuff, so we're not going to be doing you know, exposing the neighborhoods to this of that sort of thing going on.
A lot of blue lighting, I think they'll love it.
Yeah.
And it will be designed on different, um, you guys are getting me excited about it. But it will be designed on different nights so that it actually, you know, when there's events or there's holidays or things like that, then it'll actually kind of signal when there's events happening as opposed to just, you know, a Thursday night or Wednesday night. It might just be a mellow blue or something like that. Still inviting people, but not we're in full event mode or Friday night mode.
It's not going to be like Seinfeld with the the chicken.
Hasn't been designed yet.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three oh six R D A authorizing the execution of an interlocal co- cooperation agreement between the redevelopment agency of Midvale City and Salt Lake County regarding the Main Street Festival Lighting Project. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rory, recall roll?
Yes, Board Member Gettle.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Sperry.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All favorably say aye.
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. We are going to jump right into the Midvale City Municipal Building Authority. Welcome, everyone. It is eight forty-nine. Rory, recall roll?
Yes, Board Member Glover.
Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Sperry.
Here.
Brown.
Yes.
And Board Member Robinson is excused.
Thank you. All right, public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for public hearing on the agenda may address the Municipal Building Authority Board at this point by stepping to the microphone and giving their name for the record. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Consider minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Rory, recall roll?
Yes, Board Member Glover.
Aye.
Sperry.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Gettle.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Moving on to our action item, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three zero one M B A adopting the mid, the municipal building authority of Midvale City fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Here it is. Um, the really only change is this is the change in our debt service and then assuring that we have the money from all the different people that are part of the lease leases to cover that debt service. As you can see there, that is handled. Any questions?
Our interest is going to grow seventeen thousand?
Yeah. Probably more than that. Conservative, remember.
Questions or comments from Mariah? I didn't entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three zero one M B A adopting the tentative budget for the Midvale City Municipal Building Authority for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and set the public hearing for the budget for June sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M or immediately following the redevelopment agency meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rory, will you call roll?
Yes, Board Member Sperry.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
And Glover.
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All favorably say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.